I'm calling the meeting to order. This is the first regular council meeting for the month of April. And as is our custom, we always begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by the community invocation. So please stand with me. Gentlemen, remove your hats, please, and join with me in honoring our national symbol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Let us pray. Lord God Almighty, and heaven, we appreciate your many blessings and your kindness to us tonight, together for this meeting to make decisions for this community. So we ask for your divine wisdom to guide us in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you so much. Are there any good faith amendments that need to be made to the agenda? Because there was an emergency and we didn't know about it. Hearing none. Any declarations of conflicts of interest? We have the four individuals seeking bartender permits. If you have a business or familial relationship with them, I need to know now. Hearing none. Any declarations of council members discussing outside this meeting something that we'll be voting on tonight or potentially voting on in the near future? Hearing none. We will go on to, first of all, recognition of the middle school mayor's advisory council. So mayor advisory council, come on down. And please.
No, no, you got to get up front. Right up front.
Form as follows. Okay. I need Mark Barbera. He's gone. I need Millie Green. Maisy Haskins. Luca Palmer. Are you Kimber? Oh, it's working out. And then the star of the show, good old Mrs. McConnell. Now, you're probably, folks, you're probably wondering, what in the world is this all about? What it's about is you're looking at some pioneers. I know they look young, but they are indeed pioneers because what they pioneered was the first middle school in Idaho that we know of that has formed and operates as a mayor's advisory council. And the reason I wanted to do this, and we even have something going on at the grade schools too, but nothing like this. And the reason I wanted to do this is because there really hasn't been all that much interest at the high school level for a mayor's advisory council. There is at Purdah, however, and there is one there. So it's sort of like when you try to build a basketball program in a town or a football program, you start with, you know, top corner football, and then in the middle school, you run basically the same system, just dumbed-down versions of what the high schools run. Well, we didn't run a dumbed-down version. We ran the real deal. And you're going to see here and or here in just a minute what they did. So attention to orders. The Gem Community Gym Award, the mayor of Emmett takes great pleasure in naming Jen McConnell and her eighth grade middle school mayor's advisory council as Gem Community Gyms. Can you say that three times so fast? As the first known and only known mayor's advisory council in the state of Idaho at the middle school level, Jen McConnell and her select eighth graders, and you see four out of the five, have pioneered a system for middle school students to experience hands-on learning about Idaho municipalities, how to problem solve, use parliamentary procedure, plan for the undertaking of a major project, including its execution, and how to critique their processes by recording what worked and what needs improvement post-project completion. From this inaugural effort, Mark Barbera, Millie Green, Maisy Haskins, Luca Palmer, and Kimber Poser, under Jen McConnell's mentoring, have laid the foundation for the future middle schools mayor's advisory council, or as kids like to call it, Ms. Mack in honor of Mrs. McConnell, to continue to improve the processes engaged in by these students, thus training them on how to tackle real-world problems encountered in their future endeavors. This brings great credit to their teacher, their school, and the Gem Community, and makes Jen McConnell and her Ms. Mack students Gem Community Gyms. So I want to congratulate you, Mrs. McConnell. First of all, if you're willing to do it, and this will be Mark's. I'll just put it here for you. Millie, congratulations. Maisy, congratulations. Luca, congratulations. And Kimber, congratulations. Why I have six, I don't know. Oh, it's for me. That's right, it's for me. I wanted one too. So let's get in the big round of applause. Mike, since you are our systems guy, can you take a picture?
You need to be in the picture.
You're the mayor.
Okay, I'm going to mess it up.
Hold your glass.
This is so cheesy. Congratulations and thank you very much. You're free to go or you can stay. It's up to you. Yeah, they're going.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, the other matter is, as you know, April is sort of the month of proclamations, and this is the proclamation for National Volunteer Week. Whereas during National Volunteer Week, which is April 20th to the 26th, we celebrate the power of volunteering, bringing people together, and connecting communities. This connection is crucial to build healthier and stronger communities. That's fine. Thank you. Whereas connecting communities is a quality that helps people relate to others and builds awareness around different experiences, thus volunteering in those communities further connects people with experiences and actions that forge bonds and common goals and aspirations. Whereas volunteering creates lasting relationships that enrich lives and strengthen communities in doing so, it tends to connect people from all backgrounds and life experiences, thus building our capacity to work collectively and to contribute to a vibrant community. Whereas from coast to coast in formal and informal settings, volunteers create caring, collaborative, and compassionate communities. Therefore, during April 20 through 26, 2025, this community will celebrate great contributions of volunteers, their actions, their understanding, and their genuine concern for their neighbors. Let's connect our community of helping hands throughout Emmett and Gem County and beyond. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gordon W. Petrie, do hereby proclaim April 20 to 26, 2025, as National Volunteer Week in Emmett, Idaho, and I urge my fellow citizens to volunteer, connect, build, and strengthen our community so that people can be happier, healthier, and feel good about their community. Done in open session this eighth day of April, 2025, in the city of Emmett, Idaho, signed by me and attested to by the clerk, and we'll have an extra copy for you, Alice. So thank you. Now, there's one other thing that's just for the good of the order, and this came in late. It came in from the, apparently, the mom who is head of the Idaho PTA organization, or at least has something to do with it here in Idaho, and in Eagle, on the 26th, from noon to four, there will be childcare and food trucks. I don't think they have childcare trucks, but they have, there'll be childcare, and then there'll be some food trucks there. I hope that's what it is.
Want to get rid of your kids.
Yeah, I guess. Kids, you're going to go on a trip and eat some food. But this is going to be at the Eagle High School, and it says, open to all Idahones, near and far. And Eagle High School is on North Park Lane, just go up North Park Lane from, what is it, 44, and you can't miss it, you run right into it. But it says, all community members, teens, and adults, you will discover the Technology Expo Smartphone Alternatives, parental controls, home internet security. There'll be some expert speakers, there'll be a teen workshop. You will learn strategies to protect your children and safeguard your home in the digital world, create meaningful opportunities, connect with your kids at any age, reduce screen time at home and at school, and navigate difficult conversations, strengthening your relationships with teens, parents, and educators. So it looks like a worthwhile thing. I will leave this up here if anyone wants one, and if you need more than one, just let me know and I'll print one off. So the city council have anything for the good of the order? Hearing none. We will go to the consent agenda number eight, the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which was 25th of March, approval of the accounts payable. I reviewed them, and I believe Counselor Harris reviewed them. Did you find any discrepancies? No? Okay, good. And then, of course, the permits, the four permits as listed on the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
May I make a motion to accept the consent of that minutes presented?
All right.
Second it.
The main motion to accept the consent agenda as presented was made by Counselor Harris, and the second was made by Counselor Denham. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. We had the seven-second delay, so there's five ayes with one absent.
Yes.
And no nays, motion passes unanimously. Is Thomas Pierce here? Come on down, sir. If you could just state your name and where you, the town in which you reside.
My name is Tom Pierce, and I live at 1110 South Moffitt in Emmett, Idaho.
1110 or 110?
Eleven.
1110. Okay, thank you. Right. Apparently, you wanted to address the council, so you have the floor.
I do. Thank you for being here, mayor and council members. A few years back, me and my wife had the opportunity to pick a piece of property and build a house. Well, and we're on our, well on our way to doing that, we moved into the house. And as we did that, certain things came about, and as I met with Brian and two years ago now, it came to front that the sleepy little two-lane road that Moffitt was isn't what we got to keep, that the city has in place to where the sidewalks need to go in, and some other items. Well, it ended up, this piece of property also was a utility desert. There's no power, there's no gas, there's no water, and the sewer is 18 feet deep. The two-foot irrigation canal that was there, I'm told, will never get water in again. Anyway, all that being said.
You knew that going in, right?
I knew some of that going in.
What did you not know?
Well, I didn't know that there wouldn't be water in the ditch, which, you know, was here on the plot map that's stamped, and it's all noted on here that the Last Chance Ditch Company serves those lots.
Irrigation is a separate entity.
It is, and I, that's, I'm not going to.
Okay.
Press on that.
Thank you.
Whatnot. So anyway, the, there's no power to the property either, and that's a separate item as well. The sewers were 18 feet deep, which was quite expensive to hook up to, that being what it is. So on the plot map, we go here, and it refers us to this chapter 13 of the Platts and Vacations. You should all have copies of this.
Of the Idaho Code.
Well, anyway, yeah, I gave some. Okay. And here, the last, there's three ways that the lots could be served, and on here, it specifies that we're going with number two, and that it says that the lots shall be served by the municipal water company, and that the system has agreed in writing to serve all the lots in the subdivision. That being said, that once I saw that and some other things, we bought the property and started building. Me and my wife have spent well over $100,000 on city infrastructure, sidewalks, and water and whatnot. That's money we spent for the city.
Well, it's money you spent because you decided to build there.
Exactly.
That's the issue.
Yes. So that being said, then, we went ahead and we did, and we put it in, and then I received counsel, there's this chapter 11 in the city code, which is the latecomers policy. And the latecomers policy reads that latecomers policy and agreements authorize, the city is hereby authorized to adopt by resolution separate policies that provide real property owners and developers a mechanism to voluntarily seek reimbursement for eligible water or sewer facilities that exceed the sponsoring developers onsite water or sewer facilities.
Are you a developer?
I'm not a developer. I'm a real property owner. We built one, our retirement home.
Did you have that agreement in place before you started building?
We did not. So as we, as we went along, we did, and then I also show another page here with the cost to us for putting in the water pipe. We had to put in 400 feet of eight-inch water pipe. While we were building our home, we lived on a half-inch water hose running from the neighbor's house. By the grace of God, he let us use some water. Anyway, we love our town. My wife's a special ed teacher at school here, and so I'm now here seeking some reimbursement for this water pipe that we put in that the city, 400 feet of eight-inch water pipe, obviously, we didn't need. We don't use eight inches of water pipe. There's, right now, it looks like with what's going on there, three or four other people are going to hook onto this pipe here pretty soon, and just to the northwest of us, there's a plot-approved section of land that's going to develop. Some guys were out there putting some stakes in it yesterday. And all of those people will be served by this water pipe that me and my wife have put in. So.
Have you discussed this with Brian?
I did. A week and a half or so ago, I met with Stephen and Brian and Dory.
And they told you, come and talk to the council, or what?
He's, Brian said that it received merit, enough merit to come and apply it to the city council.
We might have the cart before the horse on that.
Okay.
Since there was no agreement done. So that's the first thing you need to do. And Brian would be the one to enter into that with, either Brian or Steve.
Okay.
And the, as you can see, you're simply here for a discussion. No decision can be made tonight.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah. So, but I think the way to proceed now would be to sit down with Brian and Mr. Freemeyer, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Freemeyer.
Yes.
And if Brian indicated that there is merit to this, and others will be buying into the system, maybe there, as they buy in, perhaps there would be a latecomer fee issue. I can tell you, however, that we, because of issues around, in certain subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
That is, that's a heavy lift to get a latecomers fee, just because there is some indication that maybe some developers, and I recognize you are not a developer.
Yes, sir.
May have, not that it wasn't legal, but maybe took advantage of some situations that really weren't contemplated by the individuals that came up with the system.
I can see that, actually.
And so, again, I encourage you to meet with Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Freemeyer, and if they believe that there is something that should be done on this, for latecomers, they will certainly put together a package and present it to the council.
Okay. I can do that.
Council have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes.
So I'm just curious, so did the water line come from 12th Street to your property?
Yes, it did.
Is that because there was no existing water line?
No existing water line running north there on Moffitt, yes.
The other homes, like, are you like the second house in from 12th Street?
Yes, on the east side.
So the house on the corner, do you know if they're serviced by water already?
Bill is on a well.
Oh, no way.
Right now, he, although I, he has stubbed pipes over to hook up to the water pipe for that, and he's going to split his lot off, will there be another lot, and then Ray, who's to the southwest of us, is in the process of surveying his piece of land to divide that into some lots, and he's going to build.
And you're on the east side of Moffitt, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And that was a vacant lot, and there was no well water before or anything there?
The gentleman who divided those, he had three acres, divided that up, the piece that I ended up getting was horse pasture at the time, yeah. Brian Sullivan, before we started building, indicated that since this, said that we would be hooked up to the, and served by the city water, that was not available to put in a well at the time.
So you are in the city limits, that is.
We are in the city limits.
All right.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Time is of the essence. Schedule as soon as you can.
I will. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, let's go to item 10A. Mr. Freemeyer.
How are we all doing today? Okay, so Brian Lamore owns a piece of property on 1200 Cascade Road. He actually asked for a waiver to put curb-gutter sidewalk in front of his property. He doesn't, in the requirements, he meets, I guess he doesn't meet the requirements to install it. There are no sidewalks on either side of that street. As you know, it just rarely got annexed. I think the closest sidewalk was like 1,000 feet away from his property.
Well, excuse me, you said he doesn't meet the requirement where he would have to install?
Yes.
Then why are we waiting if he doesn't have to install?
We would, well, if you update your property or anything like that, right, and he's putting a new building, it was an empty lot, he's putting a new building and everything in city limits, when you develop, you're required to put.
Okay, so there is a requirement.
There is a requirement for him to, but the requirements to do it.
Is fruitless.
Yes, is fruitless. So.
So then what about the argument two years from now, when there's a whole bunch of other property there, and they say, well, he didn't have to put in a sidewalk and curb?
Mayor, don't we have another individual that was asking for the same thing on this side of the highway, off 12th Street?
Off of Moffitt.
Off 12th Street from that now.
Yeah, yeah. That was, we were looking at that, but we never did.
But with, with all his, he did have sidewalk close enough, he did have, you know, developments coming in, and I don't know, I can't remember the exact, but I know the requirements that we asked for, for people to do that, he met the majority. I think there may have been one requirement that he didn't meet, and on that one, he met almost every requirement we have for you to have to put curb-gutter and sidewalk in. And here, the requirements we have, like, number one would be for streets with a right-of-way width of 50 feet or less, no sidewalks are located on same side of the street within 100 feet of the subject site. So the closest sidewalk on either side of the street to him is 1,000 feet away. And then in blocks where the average street frontage of the lots is over 100 feet, sidewalks on only one side of the street may be allowed, and this property has 410 feet of sidewalk frontage, or, sorry, road frontage. So I'd like to request a motion to approve this waiver for him not to install the curb-gutter and sidewalk.
Council, any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm not too familiar with Cascade Road, but I don't believe there are any sidewalks anywhere on Cascade.
So the property in question was the Gem County property that they were going to try and put a fire station. That's the property he had purchased, so.
But anywhere, I don't think of, I can't think of any sidewalk.
No. No, there is none, none anywhere. The sidewalk actually stops before the railroad tracks on the Twin Buttes side.
On Mill Road.
On Mill Road, yep.
So the property is a minimum in city limits.
It is in city limits. It just got.
It is?
Yeah.
It's annexed.
Yep, it just got annexed, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, Mayor.
Yes.
So my question is, when do we start looking at that kind of stuff? Because eventually, you know, we require these other areas that didn't have sidewalks, and then we're building in a new areas, we add, who's going to eventually have to pay for all that sidewalk and everything on that road? It's going to be the city, right?
Right.
So, I mean, that's a, that's a tough decision for me, I mean, because, you know, the city's going to end up paying that here in the future.
Mayor?
Yes. So if I understand that, I make the, I remember the property, part of that is all the interest is into the old mill property.
Correct, and that's all, yeah, into that old mill property.
There's no requirement for them to do ever probably have that curb-gutter sidewalk?
No, until they, they would develop, I guess, that front piece. I don't know the exact, you know, specifics on where your development has to be, you know what I'm saying?
But I know there's a paved driveway into where their own offices were at, and then from there's dirt all the way past this lot. So I'm just trying to think, if we didn't curb-gutter sidewalks, is there any other kind of approach that you could require so it's not dirt to blacktop? Or is that something not usually required?
Not that I know of, but I mean, I could research that. I don't know what else we would require there.
I understand, counsel, but.
Yeah.
Although my point, I look at, this would be like the Bridgelen where it's what goes the bridge in Elbert's, what I was talking about. I don't know what the development would be happening is down the road to the...it would be the west of that. I think those houses are already established. Across the road, I know there's a building, but that's county, I believe, so there's no requirement.
Yeah, and that would be...across the road is all county from about Twin Buttes up.
But there was a new development built, a little house right there, not too far, I think, right across there, no curb gutter sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then all the way back to Boyce S.K., that's all commercial property per se, I think, so I don't know if that will ever be required to have a curb. I'm just wondering if that would be discredit to the builder to have to have that little small section of a curb gutter sidewalk. Where would the curb gutter, would that drain somewhere, or would it run off into dirt or something?
It would have to just run off into the dirt on either side there.
All right, any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just had a statement. In the past, we've...when there's been situations like this where it's a piece of property in the middle of nowhere essentially, we've not required anybody to put in curb gutter and sidewalk for the fact that it goes to nowhere, and if somewhere down the road, they have to come in and put in curb gutter and sidewalk on either side of that, they usually end up having to tear it out because it's at the wrong grade.
Ah. Okay, thank you.
That's a good point. I didn't think of that.
Put that in your quiver. All right, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver for association curb gutter and sidewalk for the properties located at 1200 Cascade Road due to no sidewalk located within 100 feet of the property, and this lot not having 100 feet of property.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
But I have a question. Can I ask one question?
Okay, let me state the motion and the second, and then you can...that's how we actually should do it anyway. Anyway, the motion's been made to approve the waiver of curb gutter and sidewalk for property located at 1200 Cascade Road for the reasons stated on the record during the motion. The second was made by President Henderson, and that's where we're at. You have a question?
And I don't know if this is really just me wondering. As we stated, we're afraid that other people are going to come in, and then they will...it will be our cost. Is there a way to make it...we're gonna waive it now, but it's contingent on, in the future, when development happens and it has to go in, that you will then be required to put that in, or is that not something that can...
That's nothing that we have set up right now.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
That would be the inverse of the latecomer's fee.
Right.
Well, I just was checking.
Yes.
There was an issue one time that was dealt with with the city council, that somebody was required to put in curb gutter and sidewalk in town, but they couldn't afford it, and it was put on the back burner, so to speak, that when they could afford it, they were to put it in. It's never been done. And so, having a...I don't know how you have any teeth making somebody do something like that after the fact. I don't know how you keep track of it.
Well, it's...was there an actual agreement? Was it in writing? Was it memorialized somehow?
Yes.
Do you enforce a contract?
I think I actually still have a copy of it.
What's that?
I said, "I think I still might have a copy of it, I'm not sure."
Okay, well, you can enforce a contract, provided that if there was a breach, we haven't gone beyond five years, because that...the statute limit tolls...limitations tolls at five years on a written contract. If it was memorial...
It's been more than five.
What's that?
It's been more than five.
We'd be out of luck, I think, if that was raised as a defense.
Okay.
You're right, you can make a separate agreement, provided that you enforce that agreement within the statute of limitations. All right. Any other questions or comments? The motion is to approve and second it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? All ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Approval of the Granite Excavation Inc. construction agreement in amount of 1.2 million and some change.
And this is just a motion to approve our agreement between Granite and...or City of Emmett and Granite for the new upper pressure zone water tank. So, I'm just requesting a motion to approve that.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is a very lengthy contract. Has Jake gone over all that?
Yes, he has.
Jake did.
Yep.
Once he had all of the parts, he went over it. And we almost were gonna take it off the calender, but Jake was able to get all the parts in.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Counselor Nebiker.
Funding for this, how was that coming into place? Is that the bond?
Yeah, that was...or the ARPA funds.
Oh, the ARPA funds?
Yeah, mostly with the ARPA funds. We will stop to pull some out of water. But yeah, every...I think there was like 750,000, almost 800,000 that was through the ARPA funds.
Yeah, yeah. This actually helps us get rid of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so...
So, this has all been accounted for?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
President Henderson?
That was kind of my question. I was just wondering if there were any of the subdivisions that had paid into, you know, kinda like the street light kinda thing, that there was anything that was in place for them to help out pay for this?
No.
Because it has really nothing to do with those. It really doesn't have anything to do with the subdivision. This is to keep...if we were to have a problem with, like, our generator didn't fire up at our water plant, now that we don't have the water tower up, that is up there high enough that it will keep pressure on the town. I mean, it won't keep it forever, but it'll keep and give us enough time to get a generator or get our plant up and running again. And so, that's why we're wanting to do this.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
So, that tank would actually backfeed, or I guess, kinda backfeed into the city to...
Yes, yep. So, that's pretty much essentially what our water tank was for, where our water tank kept pressure on the system if something were to happen. So, that's the same thing. It actually backfeeds into the system, and...yep.
But our water tank does look nicer now.
Oh, it does.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, the water treatment plant at the 12th Ball Field, does that water then go through that treatment plant and then go back out?
Yep, so it actually will come through our water treatment plant, and it'll actually be...the water treatment plant will pump it up to fill that tank there. Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve agreement between City of Emmett and Granite Excavation Inc. for construction, contract upper pressure zone one storage tank in the total amount of 1 million 255,183 dollars and 22 cents with the mayor to sign.
Second. The main motion has been made by Counselor Denham to approve the agreement between the City of Emmett and Granite Excavation Inc. for the construction contract of the upper pressure zone one storage tank. Excuse me, in the total amount of 1 million 255,183 dollars and 22 cents with the mayor to sign. The second was made by Counselor Butler. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson, how do you vote? Yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Zinkin is absent. Five yays, one absent, no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canelle?
Mayor, counsel, the first thing that we've got in front of you is a new contract with DataTel for our phone system. And as I stated in my letter, we...this phone system is something that we unanimously evaluated and wish to switch to. We've used DataTel for years, but it is a different architecture for the phone system and new phones, but it all falls within the budget that's already allocated. So, it's a bit of a wash for a better system. Any questions on that? If not, I've got a prepared motion in your pocket.
The chair will entertain that motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the attached DataTel agreement identified as quote number 000563, and mayor to sign.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve the attached DataTel agreement identified as quote number 000563 with the mayor to sign. The second was made by Counselor Denham. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. One absent, five yays, no nays. Motion passes. And the appointment of the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee members. Yea!
Yes. As outlined in the letter in your pocket, we were able to get five people to commit to be on the committee. It's a little tough sometimes for volunteerism in government, I suppose.
You've...
Especially to fill specific roles in a specific area, so...but we did that, and they're all willing to serve on that committee. Spoke with them individually about it. And again, just to recap, this is just an advisory committee only, right? So, they make suggestions to the council, but legislative authority lies ultimately with the city council. So, we have this committee because we have to by state code, and our next steps, as I mentioned, that Jake and I will work on a agenda for the first meeting with the committee, and really just focused on those bullet points that are required by state code.
And it's open meeting, too.
It is, yep. So, we'll have to follow all those types of laws and post the agenda, that sort of thing. So, we'll work on putting together that agenda and look to have that meeting within the next couple of months to get that kicked off and going. Any questions about any of that? Perfect, I've got a prepared motion in your pocket for that as well.
All right, chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to appoint David Little, Marilyn Knighton, Courtney Dennis, Lance Rohr, and Tiffany Woolley to the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. The chief of the... Main motion has been made by Counselor Denham to appoint David Little, Marilyn Knighton, Courtney Dennis, Lance Rohr, Tiffany Woolley to the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. The second was made by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion or debate? They probably should come in sometime and receive an oath or something.
Yeah, Jake and I talked about that, and he didn't feel like we needed to do that.
Okay, well...
That's why we didn't have them here tonight either, but figured we'd ratify the committee that way and...
Mayor?
What's the length of the term? Is there a length of the term?
There's not one. There's nothing in the code that says, so...
For a five-year term.
Yeah.
It's kinda loosey-goosey.
It is a little bit.
And people will come and go.
They will, yeah, yeah. And it's...yeah, so it...and again, the code is loose in the amount of meetings you have. It says you have to have a minimum of one a year. If the committee wants to meet more than that, or they feel the need to, they could, but there's nothing that specifies that, yeah.
And we are collecting impact fees.
We are. We will have a...along the same lines, we will have an ordinance amendment that's coming up. Brian caught it. There's a typo in one of the fees of the ordinance compared to the thing. So, we haven't...I don't believe, and I don't have Brian here to quote me, I don't believe we collected that fee. That's when he caught it, was the first specific fee of that nature. He caught that and was like, "Oh, that doesn't look right."
Well, it was really in our favor.
It was. It was.
Like 400% in our favor.
Yes, yes.
About $13,000.
Yes, but he caught that in time, so it's not that anybody was impacted by that, but we'll have that amendment to you in the ordinance here very soon.
Yes.
Does this do anything with the county MS impact fees? Does this...
So, that is separate, and we've had some conversation with Jake about that, and I don't know where that is in the status of that.
But this committee wouldn't overview it?
Correct, they would have a separate, mhm.
Yeah, I think they were expecting Jake to do the heavy lifting, and he says, "No, this is for your benefit, so your attorney can send this up."
Yeah, I think it's still not legal cog, but I don't know the exact status of it.
Yeah. All right. So, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? No nays, all ayes, one absent. Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel. Do you want me to stay here for the department report, sir?
Stay there, because we're gonna go backwards.
Okay.
Because half the people aren't here.
All right, switching it up. Any other questions for us?
Systems, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Freemeyer, Public Works.
Yeah, I hope you know you're scaring poor Brian's fill-in here.
She was getting all ready to come up here and be up here to do this. Okay, so, you guys have my reports. I did actually receive, and it's in your guys' packet, the Army Corps of Engineers comes out and inspects all of our levees every year, so we did receive a letter for that. Just letting us know what we need to mitigate and what we need to do to make our levees better. I'm at a point of going through all this, and we'll start, soon as the river goes down a little bit, we'll start mitigating the problems that they hit sea. And any questions on...
Well, this is something that obviously wasn't budgeted for, right?
Our levees, not on the budget part of it, I'm not 100% sure. Kinda need to talk with Clint about that a little more and see, but I know every year they come in, and we do repair the levees where they need to be repaired. So, I know there's probably money somewhere that Clint has, just not 100% sure right now where that's at. But yeah, so...and mainly, a lot of it they're asking for is not anything huge. It's mainly brush and stuff that's along the banks and stuff like that. Some of it, I know they say it needs to be taken out, but as you all know, if you have vegetation, it actually helps. So, it's mostly just the bigger, like two-inch or bigger stuff that I'll be taking out. And I know they do have...that they want a guide wire to a power pole moved. I don't know if that's gonna be happening, because I know these guys do really try and pick apart everything. They're probably, yeah...some of the stuff they ask to do is like, "Are you really serious? We need to do that, you know? Move that little rock there," and so...but I will do my best to get it mitigated, what they have on here, so we stay in compliance.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, do they allow the city to do the work themselves?
Yes.
Do you have to contract anything out?
Nope, nope. Nope, nope, I don't have to contract anything out. I think it was 10 years ago when Clint came over here by the city bridge, and we pretty much tore out every tree and everything that was on that levy there, and so, and we did that all ourselves, too. And I know last year I had to, out of the wastewater treatment plant, had to put a bunch of rock on our levy, so. Any more questions about my reports or the levy?
No.
Thank you.
Alice Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Thank you very much, Mayor, for reading the proclamation and signing that.
This is your copy.
The library, as well as many, many other organizations in this community rely on volunteers. The library itself, we log in over 2,000 hours in just one year, and so we couldn't serve nearly at the level that we do without all of these volunteers. So they're, they're real treasures to us. I'm happy to report that we actually sold the final Etric ticket this morning, and Mayor came over and drew our name, a gentleman that just was absolutely ecstatic. He couldn't believe it. He never wins anything. And so, I think he's, he's, he'll be picking it up tomorrow, so happy to report that. And you have my report to review. If you have any questions for me on that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Chief Christiansen.
Mayor and counsel, I do have a little bit of information on the EMS impact fee. Jake has formed an outline that we're gonna follow once there's some minor changes done by Taj's office. So it's, he was out of town last week, but he did send those over while he was gone or before he left. So once she gets that done, we will follow Jake's outline and timeline and get that ball moving. And that'll be a concerted effort between myself, Lyleen, and Brian to make sure that we hit everything that needs to be hit and look out for the city's best interests.
So, there's not an agreement per se? There's just Jake's outline?
No, it's, it's pretty much done. I think he did a lot of the work. I don't know who did what, but-
Yeah, he did. So, is it gonna be presented to the council so they can approve it?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, that's part of the outline, but it's very specific. Jake has timelines involved in all this.
Oh, I'm tracking now. The outline is, okay, we do this here, we do this there.
For sure.
All right, thanks.
So, but it's pretty much completed at that point. You can scratch underneath the major tasks. We did, with Jake's help, we looked at our medical director agreement, and I know everybody has had questions about that. It does not need any more work done to it, so it'll not be coming before you. So, unless Dr. Lee looks at it and goes, "I want this changed," but he's probably not gonna do that, so. Other than that, you have a copy of my report. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
I wanna know why you didn't choose my ticket for that B-bike.
It would've been improper.
You have my report. Are there any particular questions? Want to remind everyone about the district spring meeting that's coming up next week? If you're interested in going, let me know. I think I can still get you in.
Are you going?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good, I'll ride with you.
Oh, boy.
That's fine, huh? I can go on.
Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
And we saved the best for last.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. How are you guys? Good. So-so.
Come see, come saw.
Um, are there any questions about the report? No? All right, thank you.
I understand that you'll be coming from time to time.
Yes.
All right.